Thank you, everyone. We have a lot to do tonight. Together. We have good lines to say, good rays to say. Those are my comments. Dive in together. We have a lot of changes to our agenda. And I'll say a lot, more than one. So the following adjustments are going to be... We have to have a motion to make these changes to our agenda, to adopt the agenda. The first change is to move 4.2, which is the Remarkable Spotlight, to item 2.5. We're going to be adding a line item 6.1, which is the BSBA Workforce Readiness Award, which has to be voted on tonight. And Dr. Grimsley will be explaining what that is and how it fits in, why it's only making it up to the agenda now. And adding 8.2, which is the approval of that workforce readiness award. Those are the changes that we've made thus far. So with that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes? A motion was by Mr. Second. Grove, any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
No? It's ordered. Let's move directly to 2.5, which is the Remarkable Spotlight. Correct?
I'll invite Mr. Stewart to the podium.
Mr. Stewart. Mic test.
Testing one, two, three.
Ahead. It's working. Let's work it, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Reverend School Board, Madam Clerk, Madam Superintendent, Members of Cabinet, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, my principal spotlight is in three parts tonight. In the essence of time for one of the spotlight members, I would like to recognize him as part one, and then move to the other two part three of the presentation.
Sorry.
Nicholas, please come to the podium. As part of the principal spotlight, one of the Nathan first running for high school is a new tradition, is honoring our mountainous government school students during the month of May. These are students that take a tremendous sacrifice of their time, their talents, and their treasure to leave the home campus, right down the road to venture to the more than campus in Volker County to undertake studies. Nicholas is a recipient of the Associate's Degree in Arts and Sciences. I'll be attending his graduation this with the person about balls, which probably from Little Town gets to 2:00. Right in the middle of the ladies. So I'll be returning to Little Town to do that. Nicholas is a fantastic scholar. He's a fantastic athlete. He's a great young man. He's a student of very few words, but when he does think there's very powerful. I had an opportunity to represent the superintendent, Dr. Grimsley, at Mountain Government School just two weeks ago. I was joined by his parents, his mother, a woman I'm pretty familiar with, and his father, one of our coaches. And to see the pride of their faces in the face of our vice chairman, also with the school board, that mean it was good to see. Nicholas's mother sent me an email, and in the email there was a address that took Carlton University in Minnesota. And I thought to myself, well, my son Camper is a little too young for college, so why she send me this? And I saw that on the, at undergraduate admission at the university, is a picture of Nicholas Judding. The university thought so much of him that they put him as one of the featured spotlights in their advancement campaigns. And for those of us that have worked in the agency for a long time, at the school, we kind of use those pictures over and over again. So he'll be in that picture for a long time. Nicholas is outstanding a man, where we sent, see him, and then let the seniors leave us soon. So at this time, I would like the school board to recognize our mountainist's long run from this year, and if I can, let's see if we were able to.
Well, at Mr. Government School, it's been a great experience for the past three years. And good, well, part of the government, but overall, I think it's been a great experience in that school, so towards it.
Great, great. Good job, and they hit Carlton, and well done. Really cool getting an associate's degree as you exit. Really proud of you for that. It's good for you to talk to the other students, too, and tell them about that type of achievement. It's going to help you so much when you get to Carlton, all right? To have that behind you, good job.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud of the superintendent, has charged the high school with definitely increasing the number of students we have here. Currently, we have four students at Mountain Government School. Mrs. Sealy, the school division's gifted and talented resource teacher, as well as our technology teacher. We have four students that were just recently accepted, are going next school year. On top of the numbers that we're going, so with Nicholas leaving, our number will go from four to seven. But we're very proud that number continues to grow. And...
And I think, I think we're going to eight, we have eight slots.
Yes.
We're going to eight?
We're going to eight slots, that's correct.
We have eight slots?
Yes.
We started nine years, six years ago?
Two.
Now we're up to eight. That's what many of you are allowed, so that's great.
Mr. Chairman, would you allow Nicholas to excuse from the proceedings? So they can attend a soccer game over here in the stadium.
Young man's got a busy schedule?
Get going.
Can we get a, are you going to get a photo?
You need a picture first?
Thank you.
Come over here, Bob.
I got a couple of this, yeah.
Yeah, come steal.
Yeah, come over here. Very, very wonderful, very. A great picture. Aww. Good luck.
Good job. Good luck. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, I have personally received the second part of our, of our principal spotlight. Representative John Hasler, who is very busy, Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, members of the school board. Just recently, the high school awarded and awarded its second Long Range Leadership Medal to Emma Jenkins. Emma will be attending college at the Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University in Placford, also in the Virginia Tech in the fall. Congratulations to Emma. We also, for the very first time, awarded the College of Women Mary's Leadership Award to a student. That student awarded is normally given to a junior. These are awards that we will continue to give annually at the high school. We gave Long Range Medal for the first time, this was in last year. This year, we're giving the College of Women Mary's Leadership Award, that award went to Abigail Oleson, Athens, a 11th grader. Congratulations, Abigail. Most recently, I got an email from the National Junior Honors Society. Carmen Pond has been awarded the National Association of Secondary School Principals, National Junior Honors Society Student of the Year. She will receive a $5,000 scholarship deposit into a Virginia 5-2 math account. Congratulations, Carmen. It's been a very busy time at the high school, as you can imagine, this day was busy, and so are all of our seniors. Next week, our seniors will be participating in the scholarship ceremony, that will on Thursday, May 17, at 1:30 in the high school. We invite everyone at the school board to come. We have our baccalaureate service on Saturday this year, May 20, that will begin 6:00 p.m. in the gymnasium. Our celebrated tradition of the senior event will be Sunday, May 21st. This is a unique time of the year where students create memories, spending some time, some of them, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman, their last weekend with some of their high school colleagues. It's also a time where they get to open their time capsules. And so the students during their eighth grade year, make time capsules. The assistant, the executive assistant to the principal, Mrs. Sandborn, is one of her favorite activities and things of the year to do. As a matter of fact, she, or this would be impossible, having one of our new students create a time capsule really soon. We will have our, in the year, pride fest on Thursday, the 25th. The seniors will have a mandatory practice that day. Last year, the seniors had the senior sunrise, and they graduate to practice. This year, they have graduate to practice, and then the senior sunset, that will take place on the auxiliary fields of the high school, that is on the east side of the campus, also known as the practice fields. So that's where they will be. The school board is invited to a special superintendent's reception, which will be held in the principal's conference room at the high school. That reception will begin at about 6:00. We are guests, and one of our teachers will have a little spread there, interact with the graduates, from our faculty, and enjoy some delicious food that we're sponsoring. That's sponsored by Mr. Tom.
Mr. Friday, or Mr. Friday?
That's Friday, the day of practice. Yes, sir. And I think we did a little bit of that last year, too. The superintendent and our sponsor that same week this year is with. One of the many things that we're excited about is our seniors, but our staff, they're very important, too. One dumb person who's been instrumental in the work that we have done is Miss Lee Burris. She is our Virginia College Advising Corps Counselor. Lee is leading us to be a student success council at the Christopher Newport University in Newport, New York City. Tomorrow, at the high school, we're going to have a special ceremony for her. The Virginia College Advising Corps is a subsidiary of America, and she is the Virginia State America Corps Member of the Year. That is a prestigious honor, not just for the Virginia College Advising Corps, but all America's corps is programmed as a commonwealth. She's number one, and she is rappahan. So we are having that tomorrow at the high school at 10:00, if anyone wants to participate. So we have a lot of activities going on at the high school. It's a busy time, and we're just so excited about that. Is that the whole time? So if those are joining us virtually, who watch this in the evenings like I do, please tell your kids they get some rest and prepare for our scheduled learning, as well as season three, for the Susan Show video. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Madam Clerk, Madam Superintendent, I would like to move to the third part of our principal spotlight. Schools are shelters. The school building is a shell. The people and the programs and the activities, that one makes the difference. This school board tonight will honor and promote away some individuals out of the spotlight tonight. The first person out of the spotlight, very briefly, is Mr. Scott Slosser. Mr. Slosser, could you come to the podium, please? He's going to beat me up. You can see he's prepared for me. Mr. Scott Slosser has served 30 years to the Commonwealth of Virginia in education, and all 30 of those years have been at Rappahannan County High School. Mr. Slosser has served as a teacher, administrator, a mentor, a friend, if I can even have a home and personal privilege, an accountability partner. Scott is someone that, when I'm facing a tough decision, or I need the consensus of staff, I look at him first. First. We have given tours in the high school, I think even more tours in the high school than anybody else. I think I'm, I think Davis Walt Disney has given tours this week, given the past year. We always stop at Scott Slosser's room. I ask him to tell the same four stories over and over again. And then, if he's going to tell the story about his wife next year, I always tell him that story, that's one of my favorite ones. Scott, Scott is a friend, and he is leading our school division to retire, to reherpassage. He doesn't play golf, he doesn't fish, but if you want to physically put turf in or get any obstacles, you can see, email him. He has one of the longest emails, the chairman, the vice chairman, for the entire school division. I'm like, S. Slosser at Rappahannan Schools, that, that's just a lot of people in this company. Scott, I would share with you and the entire community, the 23 months that have been blessed and know you can be a former representative county youth, and be with outstanding mistake. You deserve this moment, and I hope that in the next 30 years of your life, you have more special moments. I say that because Scott is a cancer survivor. He has a testimony and a story to share. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Madam Clerk, Madam Superintendent, please let us give a round of applause to the first person I want to honor tonight, Mr. Scott Slosser.
So just, just a few moments. Carlos always says, like, I'm a person of few words, but I make all those words count, so keep it short and sweet. I was thinking the other day, I'm like, gosh, what else would I do? Like, if I didn't be a teacher here for 30 years? And I really, I didn't come up with anything else. And I was like, gosh, it's gone fast. Like, 30 years has gone incredibly fast. And so we're down to the last few weeks, and I just can't say enough about our schools, and thank you for the opportunities that have been here. It's been a good place to work, we have lots of great students and families here, lots of great workers as well. And that's probably what I miss most, the students and good workers. I've been hard at work. But thank you.
Thank you.
Man, I'm going to miss Scott next year. I beg not, really, I beg not to go. Dennis Scott, over and over again. The next person I'd like to recognize, the last one I'd like to recognize, is retired agent, Mr. Michael W. Tucker. Please come to the podium, sir. Michael doesn't work for me. I asked for it for him. Michael Duncan Tucker has served the Commonwealth of Virginia for 37 years. 32 of those years here at Rappahannan County. Scott's from small town, Pennsylvania. My favorite. He's proud of his son, a military surgeon, still lives myself. There is 26 years of difference between Mike and I. If you ask anybody that knows both of us, here you go. If you ask anybody that knows Mike and I, where you can tell that we're two different people, two different backgrounds, but we're very similar in a lot of ways. I showed my mother a picture of Mike one time, and she said, I used to hate that one time. So Dad, that's a lot of stuff that's...
He's so dumb to me, your dad.
Well, he is, yes, he actually. So Michael Duncan Tucker has served not only as a student, a baseball player and basketball player, at my then come high school, he was a teacher, a varsity coach, an athletic director, the assistant principal, the principal, a few times over. But that was my dad, my dad met, my dad met actually maybe years ago. And though, I don't even like, what? And though I remember 2017, I was going through a reference check for an employee. That employee not to be, it was a bust now, it would be in that bottle. But I was doing a reference check for an employee that we hired at Eastwood High School. That's where I served at the time as assistant principal. And one of her references was Michael W. So I picked up the phone, and I said, my name is Carlos Stewart, I'm the associate principal at X Y Z School, Eastwood High School, and he turned me off this employee. He said, I know, we're in our whole family, see? And he told me the story, as a bit accurate, when we were clearing the conversation. Then I meet Mike, about four years later, in April of 2021, this time instead of being a reference, or somebody who had asked me for it, maybe Dr. Grimsley, then this board, and it kind of worked out. So Michael Tucker has been my principal mentor, a friend, like a father. I don't grow here, but Mike and I did. But he's like a father, too, he's very, very special to me, and I'm not going to miss the word, just like Mr. Slosser. I'm going to miss this guy next year. I will be, Michael is a principal, so he has special, he is one of the very few employees of the school that nobody would like to have my job, to think about this thing 20 more steps. So at this time, I would like to honor one of my predecessors, a mentor, a friend, someone that I love, basically, in terms of the school board, one of our retirees, Mr. Michael W. Tucker.
I wouldn't say, because I wasn't expecting. I just want to be on this attention board, just to watch and wear everybody else out. That guy is absolutely, he's most thorough speaker and articulate. I mean, just the man amazing, the identity level is tremendous, man who cares about kids, he's everything that our system asked for, and we got it. So he's a, he's a great guy. So that's really all I got to say. It's been, it's been a tremendous ride. Some good, great, some very bad things. But I'm going to tell you that we are going in the right direction, and a lot of things along, it took a lot of those things along the way to get where we are. It's, it's time for the next generation of excellent people to come through, because we've got some tremendous people that have come here and gone, the ones that are retiring today. We've done some great things, we've done everything the Richmond people asked us to do. They, they still continue to try to trip us up, like, try all you might, we're going to keep the standard. Just tell us what you want, we'll get there. I'm convinced of that. I've kind of been jotting things down, you hear us, I don't want to say much. But I've been jotting things down on all the superintendents I've worked for, and all their goals, and every one of them, you know, started with Dr. Daniel, who I started with, I gave him a Bob Chappell Assistant Superintendent. You know, it's all about continuous improvement. We need to always understand that we got to get better. We're never where we want to be, continuous improvement. You know, Dennis rules, you know, the service, all those wonderful things. Dr. Chappell comes in and says, okay, we want to be second to none. And then we, we had some minerals that continued those goals. There's only kind of one area where I've kind of forgotten what's happened, but we got now, we're going to the road to remarkable. And, and I say that because Kurt Superintendent is taking us to the road remarkable, and she's, she's had all those, all those years, she's witnessed many of them, and truly, that's, that's where we head. Being here, Ali Bernstein, I mean, that's, that's, that's a tremendous, that's a, oh my goodness, and here she is. A great individual, too. It's fun seeing her work, she was, I don't know if the girl would have slept, but, but she did. So that's really, I mean, I don't think, no, I could go on what I think all the answers are, but mine, everybody has a nose. Right now, I think we're answering the call. I think we've got great people here. You know, we're going to probably have that field position, and we're going to get great people, but some will just be starting out, but the only other thing I'll say to you is our, it just seems like, and I know all of us have experienced it, at least will, and we haven't. I remember the first, my first job was after I finished, got out of service and finished my degree and got my job in Prince Edward County. And I remember the superintendent at the time talking about, you know, you've got to have nerve in this business, and when you lose your nerve, you know, that's, it's time to go. And I've kind of lost my nerve. So I just, I just, you know, you know when it's time, you've got to have nerve, there's no other nerve, it's time to go. But he was a, he was a great man, too. So again, I've worked for a lot of great people, and I'm leaving from working for a lot of great people, so. I want to be on that discipitation, but even though I don't, even though I don't count, I just want to see you make them sweat.
Because I have one friend on it. Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, that is the principal spotlight for Rappahannan County High School, by honoring our students, honoring our staff members, and definitely our retirees, Mr. Scott Slosser, Mr. Michael W. Tucker, former principal. Any questions that the board we have for you this time?
Thank you for coming in, shining light on those individuals. It's a great, great use of time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We are now at the time of special recognition, where we'll be honoring retirees with gift for some, and resolution for others, and so we're going to proceed over the table and do that. But we have motions to make before we take that action, right?
I do. I approve to approve the 2023 Retirement Resolutions and Senior Heroes Resolution.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
A second, Ms. Byam. Any comments? So just so we're aware, BSBA honorable is something that we had already discussed, and it was written in the roll, that was the Walmart Resolution. The Senior Heroes Resolution, the reason to make sure we know what that is, we're passing that resolution night regarding the event that happened in Clearwater, Florida, where our seniors who were on their senior trip saved at least one life, maybe two, two maybe? Retired, so, and that resolution will make its way to supervisors, who are also signing the resolution, and we will be presenting that to that group of students on the 15th of May at 7:00 p.m., at a meeting called the order by the supervisors. So if you wanted to be a part of that, see that presentation, that's when this particular resolution will make its way to the students.
That'll be at the courthouse?
At the courthouse.
At the courthouse at 7:00 p.m. It's a Monday. And the other resolutions are for the retirees individually, all right? So that's the motion. Is it, we have a second? All in favor, aye? Aye, close no? And so ordered. So.
Sure.
Do we need a mic?
Probably use the mic, yeah. Mike, is your mic? They moved, that's nice. Does that help? Can you hear me better? Okay. So the first resolution is the resolution we passed honoring the service and dedication of school teachers. And of course, each of the names of the teacher retirees are on the resolution, but it reads this way. Resolution honoring the service and dedication of school teacher Molly Bailey. Whereas Molly Bailey is retiring after 30 years of distinguished service as a teacher for Rappahannan County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia. And whereas, in our complex and rapidly changing economy, teachers lay a foundation for success in developing students' creative thinking, collaboration, and communication skills. And whereas, teachers through their service as mentors, coaches, and club sponsors model good citizenship and encourage students to contribute to their communities. Whereas Molly Bailey has dedicated countless hours to ensure her students' academic, social, and emotional well-being. And whereas she has strived to instill within her students a lifelong love of learning and encourage students to achieve their goals while recognizing that every student has unique strengths and needs. And whereas the knowledge, support, and skill she has provided students will positively impact generations for years to come. And now therefore be resolved, the Rappahannan County School Board recognizes Molly Bailey for her service to the students, parents, and community of Rappahannan County, Virginia. Be further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude be made part of the permanent record of the county, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Molly Bailey by the Rappahannan County School Board, dated this ninth day of May, 2023. It's been, it's been an honor, and it's been a pleasure. Thank you, thank you for having me for all these years. No, we're not that many. Thought you were going to weigh that easy. Okay, next one is for Scott Slosser. Resolution honoring the service and dedication of school teacher Scott Slosser. And as I said, it does read the same way.
I doubt they're going to want us to read all of these.
But I'll read the beginning, because that has her years of service. So whereas Scott Slosser is retiring after 30 years of distinguished service as a teacher for Rappahannan County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia. So Scott Slosser. So Scott Schlosser. All right, resolution honoring the service and dedication of school teacher Janet Jenkins. Whereas Janet Jenkins is retiring after 31 years of distinguished service as a teacher for Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia. Janette.
Thank you so much. I've enjoyed all of my time here. Most of you know me, know that I've been in a long different places, but I've enjoyed them all. Thank you.
We also have a resolution honoring the service and dedication of school teacher Lisa Jones. Retiring after 18 years of distinguished service as a teacher for Rappahannock County Public Schools. We'll make sure she gets it.
This one's a little different. This one's a little different. This was, this one is for Mike. Seriously, these, these documents as resolutions become part of the permanent record of Rappahannock County. Fascinating thing. It's not just a piece of paper that you're gonna not know what to do with when you get home. But it will be a part of the record. You could tell your grandchildren to go, part of your name, you're in there. Whereas Mike Tupper is retiring after 33 years of distinguished service as a school administrator for Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia. And whereas school administrators are responsible for providing leadership to achieve school board goals and administer academic programs. And whereas school administrators help to cultivate and promote a positive school culture. Whereas Michael Tupper has shared his knowledge and skills in the development implementation of the Division's strategic plan. Where he has, whereas he has strived to instill within students a lifelong love of learning and encourage students to achieve their goals while recognizing that every student has unique strengths and needs. And whereas the knowledge, support, and skills he has provided students and staff will positively impact generations for years to come. And now therefore being resolved, the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes Michael Tupper for his service to the students, staff, parents, and community of Rappahannock County, Virginia. Being further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude be made part of the permanent records of the county. And that a copy of the resolution be presented to Michael Tupper by the Rappahannock County School Board.
I'll say something else later.
Okay. We also have a resolution honoring the service and dedication of school nutrition manager Karen McCracken. Whereas Karen McCracken is retiring after 12 years of distinguished service as a school nutrition manager for Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia. And whereas school nutrition managers play an integral role in a student's day by helping them stay well-nourished and healthy. And whereas behind the scenes, school nutrition workers maintain the cafeterias at a very high standard of cleanliness, all while managing the inventory of food for hundreds of meals per day. And whereas Karen McCracken has worked tirelessly preparing and serving food to students and staff during a global pandemic. And whereas she has worked as a team player to ensure everything is done in a timely manner for the health of students and staff. And now therefore being resolved, the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes Karen McCracken for her service to the students, parents, and community of Rappahannock County, Virginia. Being further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude be made part of the permanent records of the county. And that a copy of this resolution be presented to Karen McCracken by the Rappahannock County School Board. Congratulations to you.
And this final one is to Bertha Jacobs. Whereas Bertha Jacobs is retiring after 24 years of distinguished service as a bus driver for Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia. Whereas bus drivers are responsible for safely transporting students by following state and federal regulations. And whereas bus drivers play a crucial role by setting the tone for what is expected each day and leave students with a positive message or comment before they end their day. Whereas bus drivers are responsible for handling disciplinary situations in a timely manner. And whereas bus drivers enforce school and bus rules consistently, fairly, and in a professional manner. And whereas bus drivers provide a safe and orderly environment for students to arrive to school and return. And now therefore being resolved, the Rappahannock School Board recognizes Bertha Jacobs for her service to the students, parents, and community of Rappahannock County, Virginia. Being further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude be made part of the permanent records of the county. Also be given this.
All right, now on to continuing to honor our retirees. We started a tradition a few years ago honoring our teachers and staff who've spent 30 or more years as teachers in Rappahannock County. We created the Golden Apple Award, which is given to retirees who have met the milestone of 30 or more years of service to the district. These dedicated teachers and staff have spent the better part of their lives challenging Rappahannock youth to reach high standards and expectations, all while creating love of learning in students of all abilities and backgrounds. The first inaugural Golden Apple Award was given to Patty Waddell in 2019. And we will honor our retirees with this tradition year to year. So I'm pleased to award the Golden Apple to the following teachers and staff who have dedicated 30 or more years to the students and families of Rappahannock County. Molly Bailey for 30 years. Janet Jenkins for 31 years. Scott Schlosser, 30 years. And Mike Tupper, 33 years. Come proceed for Golden Apple. At this time, if any of you have anything to share, you're welcome to do.
Just, just for the, for the record, Bertha, I figured it out.
You're doing mess.
Has driven across 250,000 miles of Rappahannock County. With kids.
No small feat.
And I thought, well, that many miles, these halls. I just wanted to say that when I came and worked here, I was just barely an adult. And I didn't hear. But I was a very mature young adult.
That's the baby.
But, um, so I worked here most of my adult life and I, you know, I go up here and I feel like Rappahannock County and Rappahannock County schools are part of my family and it's unhard, it's unhard for me to depart. You have to say goodbye. But I, I do like I'm not saying goodbye. I'm just saying, see you later. Because I'd love to back to teach someone's school. But yeah, I will be back to visit and make sure that he, you know, is doing well. I do want to say that I, as Janette said, I really have enjoyed teaching here. And I appreciate you, you having me as, as an employee. It's been an honor and it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
The only thing I want to say is I did, I did thank you all earlier, but I do always, Shannon, they always appreciated. When I got my contract, then I got it. But you all, the spotlight that you have, I'd like to say no anytime. And not that I wasn't worried about that, but I, I did appreciate working. And certainly, like Molly said, spent a lot of time more in high school than in this building. The only thing I remember in this building was the seventh grade. I won, I won a charity fun contest. Only then the comedy scene. One of my, my classmates, and we, we didn't practice at all. We went for a surprise. I remember that. And I remember that time his acquaintance was just tickled, you know. She, those of you who knew his acquaintance, she was, she was there. She was, I don't think she ever really said anything much to me. But what she had to look at made you do what you were supposed to do. I'm respectful of her. But I do want to say one thing about Jan. She got a degree while operating her children, her three children. And doing, like she said, a lot of the things. And she got a degree in an area that's extremely difficult. That's especially the case. I dare say, if you look across the board of all the superintendents and all the leaders in probably most schools, certainly Shannick County is a region four. Our region did some of the biggest counties with the most schools. And most leaders that have had experience need to have experience in special education because it's a very, it's a very complex world. And she cooked that, did that. I've always been amazed because I know how tough it was to, to get my master's degree while I was working. Bringing the children. And I had some support there. But I know she had support in the family, but she did. She, she, she must have carried it. And that's why I was surprised when I saw her name on the list. It's wow. But yeah, she's been here a while and she's done everything. We talked a little bit earlier about the front office job she did. I forgot about that. And everybody knows that front office is, is a difficult place to be, but she handled it fine. Moved on to other things within the school and always did what she was asked to do and did it well. And I just wanted to make sure people realize that's, that's, that's. Thanks again.
This is the, the Business Honor Roll Resolution that goes to Wal, goes to Walmart, which we selected many months ago. And we'll make sure that it makes its way to them. But it's basically thanks to them for their ongoing support of our community schools. Because they genuinely have given sacrificially. They gave us, gave a lot this year. And so we're recognizing that's what this is. Oh, we do, we do. Great book. Come on up. I didn't know this. Here's what it says. 2023 Business Honor Roll Award at Walmart in Warrenton. Right? The Rappahannock County School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child to attend. And so this comes from the Virginia School Board based upon our nomination of a local business. Sorry. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You have some experience there, right?
I did. That's where I started my career. It was really funny, actually. Throughout my masters, every paper I would write, I was always connected to everything I learned about school administration. I learned working at Walmart as customer service manager. Spent eight years there, working away from college. It was awesome.
All right, at this time, we have a motion from the board regarding the superintendent's contract. I think it is. I think we're just.
I move as well, as recognition of Dr. Fenty's outstanding performance with her courage to terminate her current appointment. And appointment in fact, June 30, 2023. And simultaneously reappoint an employer for a new term of 40 years as a recent superintendent beginning July 1, 2023. Ending June 30, 2027. And that we direct and authorize the chair to execute the contract on behalf of the board. This will call for it and roll call vote.
Have a roll call vote. All in, all in favor of the motion?
Senator Biden, aye.
Aaron Trump, aye.
Rusty Mills, aye.
Say, Anne Meyer, aye.
Vote unanimous. So we're going to send.
They say four more years.
Sorry, Bert. We need to sign this too. It's official. You guys should read this too. All right. We go on to report from the suit liaison who served with us tonight. Yeah, you had a very long time. Good to see you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. As you may know, my name is Hugh Luntarner. Normally I would be here by the co liaison, Jerian. But unfortunately, she was not able to be here tonight and she sends her apologies. Instead of showing her what Rappahannock is capable of, capable of here at the school board meeting, she will be showing Blu-ray on the soccer fields what Rapp is all about. Speaking of sports, today Ryan Campbell signed to EVA Y's A D two school to play collegiate level track and field. Behind him is an impressive repertoire of excellence in men's sports throughout his career. Starting including but not limited to track, football, and wrestling. Included in his achievements is his stupendous performance in disc setting a new school record with 142 B1 countries. In the realm of after-school activities, after much hard work with the Rappahannock County High School Drama Department, they performed all shook up this past weekend alongside their head orchestral. The, these extra curriculars, like the ones I have privilege to brag about, wouldn't be possible without the teachers that make it happen. Last week, the Rappahannock County High School Student Council hosted teacher appreciation and provided a Cinco de Mayo lunch to teachers with big thanks from the culinary department for their assistance. The theme this year was around the world with life refreshments and visiting a different country each day of the week through delicate seasoned cuisine all around the world. This past month, seniors visited the elementary school in their cap and gown and walked down memory lane, high-fiving elementary school students before they leave for greater things. As senior, as seniors are deciding what future endeavors to nail, the portrait of a graduate teen at RCHS is sponsoring the decision there. the portrait of a graduate team at RCHS is sponsoring the decision there. Thursday is upcoming weeks. They celebrate these decisions that our seniors have made that are so important. And last but not least, well, maybe least favorite, this last month, students have pushed themselves by working hard to study for their AP exams. For these collegiate classes that they worked hard to study throughout the year, as well as students studying for their SOS. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Thank you. It's an exciting and exhausting month. One very busy year, I'm sure. Anybody have any questions? Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Mayor Park donations.
Yes, we had a lot of donations last month and a lot this month. So I'm not going to read each one, but we have them up on the screen. I will report that last month, the total amount of donations received for April was $17,400. And this month, we received $10,450. So in two months, almost $28,000 in donations.
Phenomenal. And that's not the scholarships, that's not, that's just extra funding stuff, right?
Yes, awesome.
I heard the after prom party went on and on and on because it took so long to give away all the stuff that had been donated. And there were drawings and waiting and it went on for almost an extra hour. All right. Is there a motion to adopt amendments from April? A motion, Mr. Grove, is our second. Second, Mr. Uwe. Any comment? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. It's ordered. Mr. Grove, have you had chats to remove?
I have. Everything is about the 80th percentile, so it's about what we're supposed to be. There are a couple of counts that will be rectified.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? If a motion, Ms. Bunton, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, all in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. It's ordered. Dr. Grisley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item for the reports of the superintendent is 4.1, the PTO update. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. McCool to the podium to give the PTO update.
Glad I could follow that. That was such a great show. Okay. Well, since the last intended school board meeting, the PTO has been able to schedule the line game company to complete last year's project of the newly paved basketball court. It's a grass playground area over at the elementary school, as well as delineating the handicap parking space that is now on the edge of the lot for the school board that allows handicap access to the ball field. The PTO had already released their fundraiser fund run at the elementary school and was able to reach the goal of $25,000, which will go to improvements on the upper playground, as well as potentially establish a shade structure of some sort and succeeding for teachers and students when their, when their playground is really exposed and out there wintering there in the grass. The clothing cottages, which we reported on, I think, first, how many months ago? Yeah, we start talking about the fall. They got purchased over the holidays and delivered in January. It's a big project. They're in the works. Both the schools and the PTO are getting hand in hand, like getting the projects completed. We have had wonderful parent volunteers. They have kind of built shelving units and put up clothing rods, which of course took time with schedules and we had some other delays. Sarah Moore and her Farm Table class, as well as the lead club, have been a great help in getting things organized in each of the cottages. The clothing cottage of the high school is about 95% complete, with only a small amount remaining to be done. And the elementary school cottage is about 50%. The PTO treasurer, Shelley Stoner, was able to go to Home Depot and get papers needed for the grass areas in front of the sheds and not for government issues or gravel sinking into the coming month eventually. The only thing left to do outside of the elementary school cottage is to grab around the papers, which will be done this week. And we're happy to announce that alongside the PTO, the schools' Rapp careers has graciously partnered with us, helped to put the cottages organized and running throughout the summer and the school year. So as soon as the elementary school cottage is completed, we will be hosting a ribbon cutting ceremony. And we will hope to make the announcement of building the cottages by the end of this month. Teacher appreciation was last week. And Dark Horse Pub partnered with PTO to provide lunches. They donated 108 lunches for the teacher staff and administration. We just, our trans. So it's a really nice community outreach. They were happy to be asked and separately, like, so hoping next year, next rest time, five of them is going to certainly all on, yeah, that's a fun. Our next PTO meeting will be next week on Monday the 15th at 6:30 at the elementary school here. We're going to hold nominations and elections for the upcoming board for next year.
That's been a very high achieving PTO to be a part of. I mean, unheard of, unheard of, actually.
Just wanted to ask those bigger, unfortunately, for being very generous about it. Thank you.
Great, any questions?
Do you have a deep bench or PTO officers?
No, it's not a seat because I would like to. Yeah, and we have people who have stepped up. I'm ending my term as vice president right now. I'm actively pressing because our president had to step down. But I think that we've got, I think we've got people who are stepping in because it really puts some new blood coming with some of our new younger parents coming in and volunteering and spending their time.
Need some first and second grade parents.
We have to go after.
That's where they recruit.
Yep, exactly. So I think, I think we'll be okay. But if you know anybody who.
Yes. If there's any, any ideas, any thoughts, any ideas for how we can cultivate more interest in PTO? If we've got any way we can help, I just love us.
Thank you. Anything?
Thank you for coming and briefing us, thanks.
Absolutely.
All right. The next report of the superintendent is the budget update. This is just the final numbers after we received the allocation from the board supervisors. So it did decrease the amount requested by about $49,000. So you'll see that reconciled in the final budget. Pretty much by moving infrastructure funding a little bit for recurring costs, which is where we landed. So we did not affect personnel or programs for students, however, that might throw off our capital goals a little bit. So we're just going to have to watch that and then just make plans for that in coming years to continue on our capital improvement plan, especially since that million of the capital line ends this year, so in the next fiscal year. So that money that is given to the schools has to be used by the end of fiscal year 24.
It's not necessary for us to go go to the bottom line. It's, we deal with what we have, correct? And we still don't know what the state's going to do.
You do have to adopt this version.
This version.
Yeah, and action, just so you got ahead and started, you know, expanding in July. Yes. So that's where the reconciliation is.
The budget change. And if the state changes, then we'll be doing it again.
Yes.
Yes. Just making clear. Those mascots of Richmond, what are they doing?
It would likely be through another supplemental appropriations process to deal with any reconciliation we would have to do later date. So cross that bridge hopefully. We'll find out in around mid to late June, they said. And they might not do anything, so let's hope maybe they do.
So that acts like an eighth up.
4.4, I guess it's the new 4.3, R C P S well check. This is the time of year that per section 2001i of the American Rescue Plan ARPA Act and the interim final rule on ARPA, elementary and secondary school emergency relief or disaster funds, we have to periodically review and update as necessary our local plans for the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services as a requirement of receiving ARPA disaster formula funds. The review process must occur at least every six months through September 30. And our in-person instruction continuity of service plans are on our website. They have been. And we usually post this to receive any comment or feedback. There are no changes at this time. But I will say with the well check, we are seeing COVID coming up in the schools and in the community again. Yes. So we are still following the recent, the most recent guidance we have from V D H, even though the emergency is going to be lifted this week. So I have to, I still yet to hear from V D H how they want us to handle that. We're probably just going to stay consistent to finish out the school year and then it'll be business as usual, I think, coming next year unless anything, you know, changes. But as of right now, we're still sending out a general exposure notice just to let people know that they may have been exposed to COVID. We still do quarantine home for five days for a positive test. And then you can come back on day six if you test negative. Even, then you have to wear masks for day six. And that's what V D H is still saying to do at this point. They haven't changed their guidance that they listed. So that's what we've been following. So tough time of year to be dealing with COVID with all the testing and celebrations and things. So, but that's the guidance we have at this time.
And V D H is no longer tracking any of this.
No.
How many notices have we had this time?
I mean, how many? We're not, I didn't.
I mean, I have a handful or.
Well, I've gotten a few in my kids. Oh, right.
I've got my kids.
So they're going out, I don't know. But we don't have our tracker anymore cases and we're not contact tracing. But we do send a general notice.
It's still there.
It's there.
We, the rest is about, we're still masking up for every contact we had.
Well, and it is around now, so it's just something to be cognizant of. And if you receive that exposure notice, then take precautions and watch your symptoms. And we still, of course, very much recommend if you're sick, stay home. Yes, so you're better. And that, that really does help. So 24 hours fever free without fever reducing medicine. And of course, no vomiting within that 24 hour period. And that's the school rules, so we're, we are back to that portion. But if we do have a positive COVID test, you do have to stay home until five days from that positive test or symptom onset.
We're going to maintain that process.
For now, but it may change over the summer because, as I said, the emergency is going to be lifted this week. So it may fall back into regular categories of sicknesses for next school year, which is what I anticipate. But we'll watch that.
All right. Thanks. All right. Report from the headquarters representative.
I did get a chance to meet with Mr. Nolan. And there's a lot going on, as usually happens when they. The after-school enrichment program is going to have a, a last day of after-school event right here in this very room. It's going to be, actually, I think it's at the same time as the party for the retirees, but I'm going to go to this one. It's from 3:30 to 5:30 at the elementary school with the students. They're going to present what they've done at after-school, including they have a ground, like they have our feeder program for ground.
What do I have? We're called hamburgers, huh?
Yeah, there's going to be food and it's exciting. So it's, it's again on the May 18, 3:30 to 5:30. And it includes performances and also just. And that's sponsored by Alliance, thank you.
Yeah. And then there will be the scholarship ceremony on May 17th at 1:30. And Headwaters will be awarded $5,000 scholarships to graduating seniors and other, sure, the other scholarships awarded, non-headwaters scholarships at that time as well. And that will be outdoors at the stadium, the center at Panhandle Stadium. And Headwaters is planning the summer enrichment program that begins June 5th and runs through the 28th. And students will enjoy a wide variety of activities, including mosaic thing, martial arts, cartooning, doodle, sports, pottery, and much more. And they hope this will incentivize people to come to summer school. And then Headwaters second, Olive Gardens Imagination Library Event. It's going to be on Saturday, May 20th at CCLC. And it's open to people with children ages birth to five years old that reside or have a hand or attend one of our local schools. And we'll still do it every time as well. And there will be a free lunch, a free lunch, and activities in a short time. And then there's a saving date for the Headwaters Harvest Festival, which was a success last fall. It's going to be this fall on October 7th, 10 to 6 at Olden Farms. And they want to, they want to feature more school groups at the event and more members of the community so they can see more of what's going on in the school during the event. And that is going to be important.
It's October 7th?
It's going to be on October 7th, 10 to 6.
10 to 6. Thank you. M B G S?
Yeah, we had, we had on April 20. We reviewed the five-year scientific evaluation, which we have a very good review. This is part of these state information. And the top projected enrollment, we are full, 211, so. Which aid them. We reviewed proposed budget, approved that, proposed strategic plan, approved that.
All right. Any questions? Yes, no?
I just wanted to say the ceremony with Mr. Grove and Mr. Stewart, where they had a whole.
We had a senior night.
Yeah, the senior night, they, every student, and all these students have so many accomplishments. And really, but what they do is they read just that they've gotten to know the kid and who they are and what they're like. And it's just really touching and amazing.
Three sentences.
Yeah, it's like, it's amazing because each kid, you can kind of get to know all these kids. And as a parent or a governor's school student, I've heard all these names, like legendary names, but I know my son has done projects with them, but I haven't met them. And to get that little snapshot of what these kids are like and see the bond that they create, which is really through their academic pursuits, it's, it's exceptional.
Started this a couple of years ago. And it's, it's a culmination of teachers write two or three sentences for each kid. And then someone puts all that together and they read that while the kid comes up and gets their award. It's really quite nice.
And then like in the bag of goodies, they give you a nicely printed, this is what they said about your kid. Yeah, it's really nice because it's hard to remember. It's very, it's just got that really personal touch for such, it's a much larger group than we're graduating at Rappahannock.
How many, how many students were in the graduating, or it was just for the seniors, right?
It was the seniors, it was like.
Sixty, sixty-seven.
It was most classes, so it was around 70. It was middle town and.
Sixty-seven.
And it went, you know, it was, it was just a neat ceremony to see what an hour. And every people, and it was also neat to see a multicolored group, wore divorce and, and, you know, gowns.
Because they wore their normal life.
They wore their normal, there were so a lot of, there were people surrounded by green people. It was just a really, and very festive and personal.
Easier to think about the crowd.
To know, to know the color combination.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a good time.
That's good. Well, thank you. All right, moving on to 61, which we inserted BSBA Workforce Readiness Award. Can you speak to that?
Of course I can. So the BSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award is an application that you can put in for programs and projects within our school community with partnerships or collaborations that emphasize communication and collaboration with the business community, student engagement with the business community, or student entrepreneurial activities. So you can only have one submission per school division. And Profile the Graduate Team usually comes up with some ideas. In fact, we actually won this award one year for our Profile the Graduate Team in that model. This year, Lee Bernstein worked on this with the intent of submitting it by the deadline next week. And tucked away down in the bottom of the packet says it needs to be certified and approved at a school board meeting. So she got me today. Please, there anyway, we can put that on so we can submit this award. we can put that on so we can submit this award. So we did put the submission in here, and what she is applying for is to honor our partnership with Headwaters, with High School Plus program, and what that's done for students. So we think we have a great shot at winning this award again for that collaboration and how that has really built a bridge for so many of our students.
Really, yeah.
Into the workforce and career and college opportunities, so it's a pretty awesome program, so we hope to get some recognition of that.
That's great. Well, I'm glad we stuck it in. So, so it is also, is there any other questions about that?
Maybe.
I mean, I'm, I'm glad that you're right.
I'm glad you caught me.
I imagine you saw it right through the end.
Well, it's good to be flexible. All right, thank you. So moving on to public comments, is there anyone like to address the board this evening? Are we? We're in the crowd down there.
We're, we're...
Okay.
More people up here than there are behind us.
We're saying, we're retiring, we're retiring.
That means it's a good beginning.
Right. Moving on to action items, then, action item, the first one is the approval of budget change, the new bottom line, is there a motion to approve the budget as it was presented this evening? Change, bottom line. So, motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Disordered, is there a motion to approve the BSBA Workforce Readiness Award, not application?
So...
I have a motion from Ms. Biden, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, no? Disordered, is there any new business?
I'd like to bring something up. I've been in some talks with some folks at the Rapid News and Rapid News Partners about the possibility of putting together a partnership paper in the school system to dedicate a section of the paper, and will be very good, something where each week we can put what's coming up, how to get to it, maybe it was room, what happened last week, a communication device other than Facebook and online and stuff. Many folks that have contacted me about it have said, you know, they don't do online and stuff, so their only information is coming from the paper, and their kid, and that's not reliable, so the kid, the paper is. And I talked a little bit with Holly about it, she's enthusiastic about that idea, and I'd just like permission, I guess permission, I will do it anyway, just to push forward and see if we can get that going in August, to open up the school year with that kind of a vehicle.
It's a great idea.
Rapid News has a lot online, like on their online community calendar as well, and it would be great to integrate.
Yeah, they could do that, but, once again, there are a lot of people...
If it's in print and, being in print means it'll also be online, so it's double.
Well, anyway, Foothills Forum is behind me, there's a couple people at Foothills Forum that said that they would love to talk to Holly about how to go about, how we could go about doing this, if it needs funding, maybe they'll fund it. I'm hoping it won't need funding, but I'm saying we're not to pay for it.
Thank you.
All right, anyway, that's kind of what I...
Good idea.
Yeah, yeah, and that, you know, I just, it'd be interesting to look a little, look at, people have, kind of, folks also, people have been wondering, when is the play, when is this and that, and there are, there is a way of just putting a window into the Google calendar on our site that we need rather than a clickable link, you know, something where we can see the dates of all the upcoming support events and graduation and everything. And we can, we can talk more, as more detailed about that, but it would be nice to have it where we don't have, where it's easy, easy to access in multiple ways, people can pop them, so that they're looking for information.
If you go to the high school, you know, if you go to the county and you go to the very bottom, do a video link to a calendar, there's your local...
But you can, but you can also just have it be an actual window in the site that you can see that you don't need to do.
I know, I understand.
Which should be just accessible.
We have a website that has its program come out.
Yeah. I love that idea.
The objective is to get the events of the school more out to more people. That's our objective.
More so the events coming up than the events that we had.
Sounds like a great Google.
Great.
But we gotta write it back.
The next month, here's the next month.
Or the next week, I mean, if we do it, that would be great.
Yeah.
Anyway.
All right, anything else, new business? Any future agendas?
I'll go back to Seward.
Next month, we're hoping, we're waiting on one more that's supposed to be coming in, or a project right up, so it's coming, so she should be ready to go in June, have it on.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, and I, I know that we had a presentation somewhat about scheduling the high school a little bit, I'd love to follow up on how that's gonna go in the future from Shandale, Derek, if you're pairing some classes and having things with, you know, writing or whatever.
Some exploratory options.
Yes, and I did just, I know, I don't want to steal Mr. Seward, he will be coming back. Right now, he has a kind of a whole revamped bell schedule that his instructional team and building leadership team is looking at for feedback as we speak, and that one does some interesting things with what was formerly known as seminar, that's all I'll say.
Good.
And some different interesting things with that, and also incorporating second breakfast opportunity again with the nutrition department, like a morning break time where kids can go get breakfast, we did a lot of research. We used to do it a long time ago in our cafeteria sales, we're much better, kids were eating breakfast. They don't like to eat when they first come into school, so we did a lot of research on that and have some good data to support that. Mr. Seward does develop the bell schedule to try to incorporate that, wait, he thinks that can work, and of course, is getting feedback from the teachers, so they're all gonna, I think it's gonna be a great product from what I've seen already, so that's the beginning part of it, and of course, master scheduling, they've gotten in all the student interests, and then they're running, of course, now we have some vacancies and some, we can have staff to do to see how many sections, and building the puzzle, you know, so we'll see what we can, but yeah, it's interesting.
That's a great question. Good update, thanks. The next regularly scheduled is for being June thirteenth at the high school. Is there a motion to, and also the fifteenth of May, there is school representatives acting at ten, the presentation to our student heroes, that's not a joint meeting, that's a supervisor meeting, which can attend, right?
Yeah.
So, seven o'clock on the fifteenth, this month, at the four house. All right? Is there a motion to move on to the second session?
We're going to move on to the second session for the policy purposes, considering the appointment of staff, professional positions, classified positions, resignations, professional and classified positions, retirement, professional and classified positions, sick leave, sick leave, and request, and discussion of superintendent's evaluation, superintendent's committee of section two point two, that's three seven one one, and a...
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second? Second, Mr. Uben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So, we're gonna go to another room, we're gonna be back in, it could be thirty, forty minutes, and it could be, and, and we'll return to this room, review any motions that require personnel to report, and make those motions, and then we'll adjourn. If you want to wait for us, that's not an awful thing. If you don't, respect you, you're sick. Have a great evening. Either way.